Yeah, she talked to me too.
It really muted on here.
Okay, it's seven o'clock, so. Before we get started? Yes, so this is a continuation of where we left off on June. Usually, you know, we have a bunch of stuff that we see at the beginning. And since this is a continuation, we don't have to say that stuff. However, because some time has elapsed since we met last. We do have to ask about ex parte contacts. If there's the potential of that happening in the time that has occurred. So for those who are present in the ex parte contacts.
No.
Last time an hour early for medical reasons, but I did view the video.
Okay, and you feel like you are up to speed now on all the details? And we've given you all the material that has been provided, so you've read that as well. And then Audrey in Zoom land?
Yes.
Ex parte contacts?
No, none. None whatsoever.
She said no, none. I could read her lips. So the final written argument provided by the attorneys that was due yesterday, and that's been provided to you. I emailed that to you today, and then you have been given hard copy. So you should have, the whole library of this case should have been provided to you. Hopefully, if you have a good chance to review that stuff. So this is deliberations. So this is the planning commission's time to talk about all the stuff. So any opportunity for you all to speak, that was last time. And so you are here to observe and cross your fingers. And so no booing, no applauding, anything like that. We want to be respectful to this quasi judicial body so they can do their job. And with that, deliberate.
Here we go.
Well, I'd like to ask staff a couple of points of clarification. Can you talk a little bit about? The road? Access. How is that?
Okay.
Access drive.
And the access is an interesting one, and I'm going to share a screen. You make me a co-host? This stuff is easier. Explain with some visualizations, especially for the people out there in Zoom world. I'll use this access map I made to help explain, explain the access issue. So. Access can be reviewed in two different categories. Public, usually in a public right-of-way. And in this example, the Belt and Road right-of-way. As I'm scrolling my arrow over here. And then access easements. And access easements would not be in a right-of-way, and that's usually a private access. And the access easement, in this example, is this one that goes along the south side of the subject property and then feeds a couple of these homes back here, such as 585 Gray Cliffs and then 575 Gray Cliffs. And our code, you know, has standards for each. So if we're talking about a public right-of-way, we normally look at our various street classifications. And this is a local street. So the normal standard for a local street would be a 50-foot right-of-way, which we have with Belt and Road. And then a 34-foot wide roadway width. And that doesn't have a maximum load to it as far as the amount of dwelling units that it serves. If we look at another type of public standard, we have our skinny street standard. Now, our skinny street standard, the narrower roadway width of either 20 feet or 26 feet. And that's limited to 200 average daily trips. And that's just a term for traffic impact, and that is approximately 20 dwellings. The other thing, the standard that we can look at are cul-de-sacs. Basically dead ends. And cul-de-sacs don't always have to end in a standard cul-de-sac. Our code essentially looks at those as dead ends. And in that case, the code limits it to 20 dwelling units and with a normal maximum length of 400 feet. So that's, so that's the, the public standard. Now, we do have a private standard, and the private standard is the one that I referenced in the administrative decision. And what that says is if you have an easement, normally if you have an easement. Okay, well, what it says in our road standards, so our road standards, the public standards are in chapter 17.152 of our code. And there's a section in that chapter about access easements. And it says, in lieu of the street standards. If there's this other option, if it's the only reasonable method by which a lot large enough can be created. And then it references some figures in chapter 17.84. And that's what I used in my decision and thinking about this. The, the road as it is now doesn't meet any current standard. And so in, in, in my decision, I said, well, hmm, it's kind of like a glorified driveway. We know we have some issues. We had that turnout provision, which seems feasible. And so that's, that's what I applied. Now, the code, so let's say you have something funky going on. The, if we go back to chapter 17.152 with the public street standards. It does say that in weird situations, and this is referenced a few times in some of the documents from the applicant and applicant. That. We can consider alternative standards. And in my decision, I took the private standard, applied it to the public right-of-way and said, well, under the circumstances, this is the alternative standard. Does that all make sense, or is it?
Yeah, the only question, the only question I have about that is. The. No one has, the applicant never proposed that this would be a private driveway, right?
No.
This was always considered continuation of a public road.
Well, yes and no. Yes and no. So if we go back to the access map, and I'm going to go into a different map here. So Belt and Road is a public right-of-way. And it's, it's a, you know, narrow public road. There is some private access proposed, and that is, we look at. Well, we could look at the tree plan that shows it. So here's Belt and Road. And in order to access parcel two here, what the applicant is proposing, because Belt and Road kind of ends beyond here. So they're proposing to place an access easement 30 feet in width along the south side of the property. And then. I think that's 40, yeah, 40, there it is, 40 feet in width on the east side of the property in order to access parcel two. So you have, and, and they will need to, at least per the administrative decision that's been appealed. They would put in a 10-foot wide driveway or more if required by the farm marshal down to parcel two here. They show this fire department turnaround there. So it's, it's kind of both. So in the administrative decision, we said, well, this is kind of weird. We're going to apply the private road standard to everything, even though you do have a portion that's public and a portion that's private.
However, aren't there additional parcels as yet to be developed that could potentially be developed beyond this property?
There are some, what we haven't done is conducted a, you know, an in-depth lot of record analysis. And a lot of record just means it's a legal lot, not a tax lot. In, in, in the years I've worked here, this little sliver, I, I don't think that is a legal lot of record. But this one, this one maybe, so there's one there. And then you have this here. Now, this parcel, although it does look large, is very much encumbered by wetlands. And so how many developable lots you have there is a question. But certainly, there's some possibility of accessing using the Belt and Road right-of-way. But if you recall our last discussion, the division between Gray Cliffs Drive is right here. And because this property does extend this way, you know, maybe they can get some lots on the other end. But this is a complex lot, and there'd be a lot of study to kind of figure out how to cut that up. But to answer your question, you know, there are at least a couple, at least at a glance.
The applicant never asked in the original proposal for a variance to the street requirement, is that correct?
No. And, and the, the code doesn't say you need a variance. It, it, it provides the option for the alternative standard. And it says, well, these are the things to consider, but it doesn't say thou shall have a variance to get to the alternative standard. And so what we did as staff is we said, well, I guess in the alternative standard in the public right-of-way, we'll use the private. We use the private standard in the public right-of-way. And that's how we came out with the turnout thing.
The question of, just for another subject, the question of setbacks, could you explain? The proposed lot would impact various setbacks, both on the river and on dogs and water.
Sure. So. I'm going to, this is the preliminary plat with a bunch of my notes. So here's the division line between parcel one and parcel two. Now, parcel one, and this is notwithstanding easements, because we know, well, there's the, the famous drain field easement here highlighted in yellow. And that impacts building envelope. But here you do have these easements, and so any, any yard requirement, that's what our code calls it, a yard, would be measured off that easement. And so in the R10 zone, which is what we have here, you may have a 20 feet on the front, a. 10 feet on the side, I think. I can look that up and tell you for sure. But I, I know I was looking at that because this, when we amended the decision, we said, this needed to be 30 feet. And I was looking at this distance from that to the garage to make sure. It looks like I have it written there, and I, I didn't find an issue with that.
Are you saying that the city required a 30?
Yeah, originally, we had it as 20. And there was an attorney who was not involved in the appeal, but was involved in the administrative level that said, hey, city, wait a minute. The. And so we'll, we'll get back to you on the wetlands and stuff. Yeah, Dan.
Jacob, can you hear me?
So what happened is when we have land divisions, we have various geometry and size requirements. And, and one of those is if you're on a dead-end street, there's the cul-de-sac standard as far as how much of your lot. Fronts that street. And originally, we had it at 20. The attorney who was involved in the administrative portion, but not in the appeal portion, said, hey, wait a minute, the standard's 30, what are you doing? And so in the, when we amended the decision, we increased it to 30, and that's what my little note here represents. And if you look at. The revised tree plan, other details, you can see that they increased that to 30.
On the subject of requirement to be 40? You're on the corner.
They, I believe that they elected. To do that, yeah. So sometimes, you know. You have a right-of-way, right, right? And there's a lot of things that go on there. There's your street, there's your utilities, and when you have topography and trees, you know, it's not always going to be parallel to the line. And so when you have more area to work with, you have more area to get that access in there. And so I believe that the applicant did that just so they had will-go-room for utilities and access. Yeah, that's not, we, we did not say whip, 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 stick, stick, you need 40 feet there.
Some standard though, sure.
Yeah, and that's where that 30 comes into play.
Jacob?
So to go back to your question, Greg, we'll talk about parcel one a little bit more. So one of the things that we need when we have land division proposals that are within proximity of our sensitive lands, which include wetlands and the river, right, marine areas, is we need what's called environmental assessment. So we know, where's the boundary at? And they, they hired a wetlands person to figure that out. And here in parcel one, you can see, this is the, so the Dalton Lake itself, the resource itself is not on the property, but some of the protection zone, which is 75 feet for both the lake and the river. Those are reflected on here. And so these are areas that, there's the potential to reduce those, but you have to meet a bunch of stuff, and it's not always possible. And they're not proposing to reduce the buffer, but we do need to know where it's at on the parcel. And there's a condition in the administrative decision that we have an easement, just to make sure that people in the future know that that's a buffer and is supposed to be protected. So parcel one, you have a little bit on there. Parcel two, you have more of the Dalton Lake buffer. And then you also have some of the, will be a river buffer here as well. And if we go back to my notes. Earlier, I talked about when we're creating lots, we have geometric standards, in addition to size standards. And one of the things I wanted to make sure is that parcel two met the dimensional and size standards, excluding the sensitive land areas. And that's why you see some of my little cat scratches here and there. And also, that's why when you see the narrative, it talks about the total square feet and then also the square feet outside of the sensitive land area.
And so it's the city's position, staff's position, that this is a buildable lot safeguarding the wetlands as well as the protection zone?
Yes, and you can, you can see my notes right there when I was, all right, let's, let's make sure we got it.
I just want to go on record.
Another. Christina? Thank you.
I guess while we're waiting, just to put it on the record. Talk a little bit about. How much consideration legally the planning commission can take into account? Between the neighbors over the, or the subject.
Yeah, and that's a good question, and obviously, there's, there's a lot of dialogue, testimony, and legal cases being thrown out on that easement. And the position that we took, and, and, and this is an issue, you know, once we found this, like, whoa, wow, that's interesting. You know, we talked to our legal counsel about it. And. For the purposes of the partition, we know that drain fields, you're not supposed to build roads over them. Utilities are supposed to be a certain distance away. The easement is a legal wall. To access parcel two. But it's a private easement. So we want to know that that easement is not in the way. But the, the, the game of tug-of-war on the validity of that easement is a private matter. So let's say. The applicant and the applicant got along, and. One of them gave him 100 bucks to get rid of the easement. Cool, easy, simple. Or let's say that after this. They duke it out in court, and then the judge makes a decision. Well, then we know. So it's not our fight as the city, but we know that. It's an encumbrance to get to parcel two. So we need to make sure that it goes away, is reduced, so it's not an encumbrance. Or the applicant find a way around it, like an easement on someone else's property. And that's how we structured the administrative decision.
Okay, does the administrative decision go in after? The two parties determine what happens with the easement?
Well. The way we wrote it. The condition, the way it's written now, if the easement, let's say the easement battle becomes World War III. The way it's written now, that could hold up the partition. So if we, if we look at our conditions, the administrative decision. So we have several categories of conditions, and one of them is stuff before we accept the final plat. So land partitions, you know, there's the preliminary plat, which is the subject that we're talking about now. And there's the final plat. And the final plat is all the stuff's done, everything's good, review it, get it recorded, done. And so there's an interest for us to make sure certain things are done before we accept the final plat. And one of those is the easement. So the way we have it written now, so before we accept the final plat for review, this big easement shall be lawfully abandoned, removed from the deed. And that, in the original decision, that's all it said. There was some comments that we received that resulted in an amended decision. And one of the amendments was, we, we added another stipulation, that condition that said, or easements can be attained on neighboring properties to circumvent the drain field. This option is only valid if the width of the easement is sufficient for anticipated dwelling units slash uses served by city standards. Provisions that includes the subject property. Because when we have shared private accesses, we want to make sure we have easement agreements. One thing this condition didn't say is, you know, potentially reducing the easement. But certainly, the intent is that the legal wall, you know, it's like a force field. And if that, you know, if there's a way around it on the property or off the property, and you can get your easement and maintenance agreements for that stuff in place, well, okay, good. Well, it's not in the way anymore.
And if the easement is not. Negotiated. And the two parties, and it stays as it is?
So let's see, in the, the game of easement tug-of-war. You know, both, both are pulling at that rope, pulling at that rope, not moving. And then they say, well, we want to submit a final plat. Then I have to say, well, where's the easement at? And we're still playing tug-of-war, and there's no movement. And to say, unfortunately, we can't receive it. So the easement itself. Could, you know, this could be approved. Let's say it was approved as written, and I should, I guess I should talk about your options. Pretty good idea, I thought about that earlier, but you're going to need to think about that now. So if it's approved as is, the easement stands, and if they can't work it out, or they can't work it out while this partition is valid, which is not valid forever, then the decision dies. You know, we have a pile full of paper.
But for a order of clarification. It isn't the commission's responsibility. To deny the application based on the question over the easement, that's from a higher authority, right?
Yeah, it's, it's not our fight. And I mean, there are arguments in the record that there's no way in heck that it's going to go away, and you should deny it. And there's no way in heck you can get it done in time to deny it. And, you know, those are all things you can consider. So let me go back to, what are your options tonight? So you can uphold the original decision. Because there's, there's, there's some, there's some comments that, you know, I, I erred in my approval. because there's some comments that, you know, I erred in my approval. And so you can say, "Well, staff, we think you got it right." Or the amended decision, yeah. The first one is, you know, it's been amended. So the original one is, I mean, I guess you could revert to that, but that would be kind of weird. So you uphold the original decision. You can reverse the decision and say, "Well, for whatever reason that you may find, we deny it." The third option is to modify it. And that would be, "Well, we approve it, but maybe there's some different conditions that we hadn't addressed." So those are your three options: uphold, reverse, modify.
Talk about...
Until that easement is settled, there is no...
If we are uncomfortable with your proposal as far as the turnout and we want to see that road extended, would that be? Can we modify or we have to outright deny?
That is a good question. And so there's a lot of stuff in the record, including some cost estimates and listing a case law. Basically, when is too much too much? You know, when is the government overstepping requirements? And the applicant says many times that, you know, they're not objecting to the administrative decision. But they talk about the cost it would take to expand the road. And they feel it would be disproportional. And that goes back to, you know, well, do you approve the standard? Or not? And it's not necessarily disproportional if denied. So I think that goes back to, you know, do you think it's acceptable to look at a private standard in the public right-of-way, which is basically what staff did? I think it gets potentially dicey if you say, you know, "We want..." "We want more improvements." It gets into that proportionality question. Although at the same token, maybe you could say, "Well, it's either this or denial. And if it's denial, there's no proportionality." And, you know, that's just one of the things you have to discuss.
Oh, yeah, but it would be different. It would be different if that were the last potential property that could be developed. So when you potentially now open up more properties, then you're raising, you know, do you continue this private road, private alleyway, whatever you want to call it, driveway? You know, it becomes an issue. And as we have on the record, public health services have indicated that that it is not easily accessible for emergency use. There's one thing in the appellant's letter, the final summary that I wanted to address. It's on page two, the second paragraph. It says, "To announce her satisfactory for private air driveways, not for public streets." And he cites the city's municipal code requiring at least even for, quote, "local skinny street." Nothing in the code allows turnout substitute on a public street. Can you address that?
Sure. And so that's kind of what I was alluding to earlier, is what we did as staff is even though, you know, Belt and Road is in a public right-of-way, we looked at the private road standard. Normally says, if it's, you know, if it can't be accessed by a public right-of-way, and the only way you can get it divided is with an easement, then you have this private road standard. And then in the public right-of-way, it says you can require alternative standards. So the question for the commission is, do you think it was okay that we took the private road standard, plugged it into the public right-of-way as the acceptable exception?
Does the private road have to be requested by the applicant? Can that just be something considered as an alternative by staff?
It does say...
This is a city street.
Here it is in chapter 1, 17152. And this is the chapter that has all the public road standards.
What page?
This is page 17-229. And it's going to be on the left column of that page, the bottom third, sub-three, creation of access easements.
I've got it.
So the approval authority, which was me at the administrative level, may approve an access easement established by deed without full compliance with this code, provided such an easement is the only reasonable method by which a lot large enough to develop can be created. And then it references chapter 17.84.
So the owner would have to provide a deed? Is that what you're saying? I don't understand what the code says.
If the deed is necessary, but it's in the public... The portion in the public right-of-way, there's already legal access, so deed wouldn't be necessary. But... So that would be the technical justification. I know this gets complicated and the codes are kind of interwoven. But that would be the technical justification for allowing parcel two to be accessed via this easement here. Because parcel two is not a Belt and Road at all, as you can see. So that's the specific justification there. Now, if you go to the next page, 17-230, again, the left column, bottom about third, there's sub-sub B there, improvements. Improvements to streets shall be made according to adopted city standards unless the approval authority determines that the standards result in unacceptable adverse impact on the existing development or on proposed development or on natural features such as wetlands, steep slopes, or existing mature trees. And I think there was some argument in there about the wetlands, slopes, and trees. An improvement in exception, the approval authority shall determine that the potential adverse impacts exceed the public benefits of these standards. And then it lists some things to look at. So again, it's the approval authority's purview. And the question really for the commission is, so that's talking about varying from the public road standards. And what we're seeing, or what we said is, well, it's kind of a glorified driveway, you know, even though it's in a public right-of-way. So we're going to apply that driveway standard under the circumstances.
Okay, but in defining unacceptable adverse impact in our code, does that mean something that the property owner could not expect would happen rather than knowing that there was a problem and trying to circumvent the rules to so that they didn't have to meet that? See what I'm getting at? It's like when we give variance sometimes, we give them because there's just something that was unexpected, was no fault of the property owner. And they want to correct the situation. And they really can through our, you know, program procedures. They ask for variance. This, in my opinion, is... I know this is getting into a deliberation split.
Well, that's, you're deliberating, so...
In this case, the property owner knew about the difficulty about getting eroded at the time that the property was purchased. It was not something that just popped up. So the unacceptable adverse impact, could that be defined as something that was a unexpected current that would require, you know, consideration outside of the normal? Or does that open it up to a more broader definition?
Well, it talks about the things that you can think about. It includes your traffic, on-street parking needs, sidewalk and bikeway requirements, utilities, street lighting, drainage and slope impacts, street tree location, planting and landscape areas, and safety for motorists, bicycles, and pedestrians. So in your contemplation of that, you know, that's the soup.
I had a question. Last batch of laws from the state of Oregon allowing and providing for infill affect this? Or is it relevant or it doesn't apply? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm just, a while ago, Jacob talked about how we were required to do infill when we did those codes and allowed the auxiliary dwelling units and we had to outlaw duplexes in different places and stuff. I was asking if any of that law applied to this.
Oh, yeah.
I'm just making sure that we're not forgetting something that's relatively new to the, because that's just new this year.
Yeah, and that's a good point.
I just want to make sure, because we've not... This is the first time we've had a division since that law came into effect.
So, you know, right now, you know, we have to allow ADUs. And next year, we'll have to allow duplexes. And it comes down to, you know, when I was thinking about this today, you know, with the limited road width, you have so much capacity. And if you have an existing lot and someone wants to be able to use it, you have to let them use that lot reasonably to avoid a takings. The takings is when government regulations robs you of any economic viable use of the land. So if we have existing lots out there, we have to let them build on it to some degree. In this case, we're creating a new lot, which is creating that new entitlement, if you will. And so it... So the question is, if you allow a new lot, which will allow a little bit more traffic, how does that impact, if at all, those existing lots and their ability to use them? So I think it's kind of an indirect impact.
Just by that sure, because that's brand new and we haven't really...
Are you, sorry, you're saying that that is something we need to consider?
If you think it's relevant.
No.
Does the city still have the ability, because of the additional lots that potentially could be developed beyond this particular area of the... Does the city still have the ability to have placed on the deed that the property owner must agree to development of that street at some future time when the other would share in the development of that street or road in a future time when the other properties beyond are developed?
You could require the classic non-remonstrance agreement.
How long is that for? Forever?
Forever until extinguished. And that's a tool that planning departments have used for decades and just says that the property owner will not object to the formation of the district. And so of a local improvement district. So local improvement district is an assemblage of properties that are assessed for some type of public improvement. The most recent example we had in the city was the sewer line out Kavanaugh. Les Schwab was having some septic problems. And Bings was having some septic problems. In fact, Bings was getting hammered with the EQ, I believe. And some other properties back there were too. Because it's just, you know, wetlands, high-water table, a lot of problems. And so they formed this district to extend the sewer line back there. And then, you know, Les Schwab, the Marx Customs Exteriors Building, Bings, several other properties connected that.
Would the city be able to, at the point the other properties develop, can the city then state, "Okay, this road has to be developed to this standard"? Does that work as far as, or you have to say that upfront?
Well, it comes back to a lot of the things we've talked about. You know, if someone wants to build a house on a lot of record and we say, "Well, you have to build Interstate 5", we're probably going to lose that battle. And we'd have to let them have some economic use of that land to avoid the takings. And so, you know, it's one of those cases where you have to kind of, well, we have, there exist some circumstances. You know, what makes sense? And, yeah, I think that's why, on the administrative level, you know, looking at it, we went with that private standard based on the circumstances.
So if all the properties along that road, existing houses, have, don't have a remonstrance of, what do you call it?
A non-remonstrance, or...
For improvements of that road in the future. And we apply that to the newest single lot to be built. Does that, is it ever retroactively placed on all the other property owners? Or they forever grandfather out of that remonstrance?
Yeah, we can't force it on them. So if this property had, or these two properties, I guess, really...
They would all gain a benefit.
It increases the odds that it'll go through. But chances are, if there's some improvement that's needed, people will get on board. Although, you know, this is a particular neighborhood and a lot of the neighbors probably like having a woodsy street. And, you know, just based on, well, we don't want anything more out here. We're going to vote no against that. But, you know, I can't predict the future.
We're going to be looking at this again as the laws go, get developed.
Well, maybe, if it's a lot of record, then, you know, we take the building permit and we consider the road and do something. This is different in that it's a partition. And that's why it's kind of a higher bar of review. Because, you know, you have a property with a house on it. It already has a use, it already has a clear viable economic use of the land. Parcel, you're creating a new area that has that same entitlement now. Whereas if you have an existing lot, well, it's an existing lot. And you let them do something commensurate with the improvements while avoiding the takings.
So to wrap up my questions, one last one. And I apologize for taking the sort of having so many questions, but can the commission consider something in between turnout and the current existing width for such road?
You mean a higher level of street improvement than what was proposed or what was required in the administrative level?
Well, what you talked about was the turnout.
Yes.
And what I'm saying is, there's a, what you're saying is, you're proposing turnout. The city has a requirement as far as minimum width size for a road of that nature. What I'm saying is, can the commission, because of the uniqueness of this area, can the commission consider something in between? Not as narrow as a turnout, not as wide as a normal street.
Potentially.
What would we have to base that on? We would have to have some legal mechanism that we could hang on if we make that a condition.
Yeah, we would have to look at our standards.
You mean the undeveloped portion? You can't go back and can't say, the belt and road you want, already built portion, you can't say you want a narrower, see, what you're saying is, we could do that for the future portion. Well, I think you're saying is, if we had these developments and they, the development, and we say, you got to put a sidewalk in there, give them a sidewalk inside, because the next guy's going to pull the sidewalk and then continue. So does this right front of this lot, will it get widened to 20 feet? And, or something less, what you're saying? So requirement, it's not building it clear to the obstacle, but it's building it as, as they're responsible for, they're part of the road. Basically their extension. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I think you said.
So my question is, are we setting any kind of precedent with this exception on the road? Because coming from the Gray Cliffs side, seems to me that they could ask for similar things, exceptions to the road. I know the property down by Gray Cliffs is owned by builders, it's very likely to be developed at some point. Even though this is the first decision I participated in, I've sat in the audience quite a bit and there's been other exceptions and it seems like the city creates comprehensive plans and rules and things and then they always find exceptions to that. So I'm a little uncomfortable with that. The thing I'm uncomfortable with is, it seems like if we had sitting here several other property owners that were in favor. My opinion might be different, but we're sitting here with the applicant and not just the appellate, but the neighborhood, it's like there's not one other neighbor that is in favor of the partition. I think it's honestly a mistake to prove that road, that neighborhood is charming because of that little wooded road. So if we have the ability to not intrude on that beautiful little neighborhood and make this road a lot wider, I mean, that just seems like a big mistake.
There was a couple letters of support. I know there's a lot of material, there was a couple, so.
Were they neighbors of support, maybe? The other part that has not been discussed this time, I'm looking at my list from the other night of testimonies, is where the building site would be and the group Friends of Dalton Lake and the Historic Society have been working on research on what's happened in the Dalton Lake area. And they found a new camp that they didn't know about. The Historic Society has published a website regarding Dalton Lake. And so may not be relevant at all, but to have a building site close to the beach area, can imagine that Americans didn't camp there. And I think that's about, still want to set a bunch of precedent, precedents of exceptions and then we have to do this all over again in a short amount of time for.
I mean, the precedent question is a good one. There hasn't been a lot of land divisions along this road and certainly, you know, we have this decision, it's created, people are going to look at the assessor map and, oh, that's a partition number six dash 20, what was going on with that? Oh, interesting, the city required that. And so it does, I mean, it's, you know, it's going to be clear on the record that that was the decision that we made for that parcel and any subsequent decisions on this or a neighboring road, you know, we would have to build off that.
And I know the other thing that we're not supposed to consider, but clearly the applicant knew about the easement when they purchased the property. So.
You know, councilor's question in regards to the archaeological potential site. There's nothing in the record that indicates that a formal study of this area, this particular site that we're talking about, particular property, has been done, right?
Archaeologically speaking?
Yes.
No.
So it's only the opinion of the society that this may have been a campsite or that has some.
There was some testimony of last time that.
Yeah, I think, I think there was, you know, yeah, there was some discussion from people who've lived there a long time that talked about finding artifacts. And, you know, if they start digging and they find artifacts and, you know, it's alerted to the tribes, that'll be something that would have to be dealt with. I haven't dealt with that in my career so much, so I can't tell you exactly what would happen. But I know our public works folks, early 90s, 80s, down by Gray Cliffs Park, they were doing some digging and found some artifacts and they had to stop, yeah.
Would that be something that we would, that we should consider in any conditions? That an actual archaeological study be done of this immediate property? Is that something for the city to, or is it already state law?
A good question and.
I know it's a state, we have, we have a condition. Found by the Chippewa or the tribes.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good point, there's always other layers. So it's just not our rules that govern it. If there were an endangered species habitat, then you would have state federal agencies that would govern. And our code gets into that too and.
But wouldn't it be wise if the questionists would raise that we're the ones that actually are getting the permit? Wouldn't it be wise as a first step to making sure that the property owner knows that they have to do this in order to undertake the development? Whereas if they, if we won't put it in, then they can say, well, we were, we know that this was required until it's too late. Yeah, but the, you can't cover everything because we don't have any jurisdiction on it. And it's, and we wouldn't, we might not even address it correctly if we, it's not our authority. But if it's brought to our attention, this is potentially could be something that should be investigated as we would miss in requiring the property owner to do that. We're liable. I guess that's an issue for.
Yeah, so this, this came up once for the Gray Cliffs, raised on a state subdivision. And back in the early 2000s or so, there was some suspicion of artifacts and they had an archeology, archeology, you know the word I'm trying to say. Inspect the site and give it a clean bill of health. Now, in our sensitive lands chapter, you know, so there's a variety of sensitive lands, wetland riparian areas, historic resources, and archaeologically designated sites or culturally designated sites as listed in the comprehensive plan. Now, we do have some maps that show some properties with potential archaeological sites and that's not something we're supposed to share with the public because they're obvious reasons. This site is not identified in our comprehensive plan. And let's see what else it says about that. This is the one thing I didn't prepare. But you could certainly put a condition in there that is general and that if artifacts are found, applicant will be required to comply with applicable agency rules. So, so you're acknowledging that there's the potential there, you're putting the condition in there. And so at least the city has flagged it as a potential.
What you have to do is require them to do something with the cultural action.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's a rerun of that, we used to require them to have a cultural monitor during excavation because the tribe asked for it, but we couldn't require that, we had no authority to require that. And so we just gave them a show, we said, oh, sorry, we can't, we can't enforce that. So it's an enforceable thing, you can't, we can't enforce it because we don't have that. We don't have that right, it's only a suggestion, it's a courtesy. By the way, you know, federal government needs a state permit or a federal permit or by the way, you've got this cultural thing you got to. Still the, still the builders, the person doing the work, it's their responsibility to abide by the federal, the state, the city laws. It's not our responsibility to make sure that they abide by all those things.
Good to know.
Is my mic on?
But it's not, it wasn't in the record, but you keep talking about this beach. Isn't the beach aldrich wells, it's not a native, not a natural beach. If you go along the river anywhere, it's just mud along the river, there's no natural sand. I don't think you could call that a natural beach. Yeah, there's sand there.
Yeah. But as far as being a.
It's a record, so.
As far as being a shoreline that Native Americans may have used.
Buried under dredge material. It may have been even a bank, maybe dredge material formed that shoreline. Or whenever the dredge material was placed there. Wherever near, it would be beach. Acres and acres and acres. Fill, place there in the twenties from dredging the river. With the original shoreline. The city rears, all built on dredge wells from, let's see, knowledge blew up. It was not the original shoreline. So I'm just saying, it could be that there are archaeological remains there, but are they buried deeply under dredge wells or the surface that's, say? Well, I didn't know that they were talking specifically about along the riverbank. I thought it was for interior.
Okay.
And then one other thing is the tree plan, is there a way to amend something so that we can go around these trees that they discussed in the findings? So that we don't have to cut down 150-year-old trees? Is there a way to?
Well, so let's go into the tree plan. Okay, so, on trees in this area as expected. So what, there's a couple provisions that our code has for tree protection. The most aggressive one are trees within sensitive lands or respective protection buffers. How many trees in the sensitive land buffer associated? We have several in the protection zone associated with Dalton Lake. And so these trees are protected. In fact, these trees are protected even down to a smaller size and any native vegetation is. Now, when we get outside of the protection area, we have a requirement to document the trees available at the time of application or that have been removed within a year of application. And so that way we get a slice of time. Okay, these are those trees that were here. And the way it would work with this is, okay, they, if they remove trees as documented for the development and they're required to be replaced at either a one-to-one ratio or a two-to-one ratio, depending on the quantity of trees removed, which is, you know, either 50% or more. So if you remove more than 50%, it's the two-to-one, if it's less, it's the one-to-one. And the idea is that, okay, we'll have this existing tree canopy. Development is probably going to result in some loss of trees, but that replacement requirement helps minimize that. What our code doesn't do very well is pick and choose if they're outside of a sensitive land area.
And we don't have preservation, tree preservation, or it's not a tree preservation, it's a replacement.
It's probably a silly question, but since I'm not familiar with it really, but is that number of trees or size of trees? So if they take down a big tree, do they have to put in a tree or?
Yeah, good question, that's actually a detail I have, so I'm glad you asked that. So as I said, in the sensitive land, you know, even smaller trees count because it's native vegetation in a protected area. The tree plan I talked about, that has to do with trees that are more than one foot diameter at breast height. So if they had a bunch of seedlings, if all these trees on here, outside of the protection zone, where, say they were just six inches at diameter at breast height, then, you know, they could chop them down with no recourse.
Jacob, Audrey says she's been trying to talk, but we can't hear her. She's not muted.
She's not muted.
No, it's not muted.
Talking right now, but.
Your microphone on?
Yeah, okay, Audrey, we can see your, and did you test your audio and mic when you?
Those on Zoom can hear me.
Please Zoom can hear her, but we can't hear her.
Didn't you call on the phone?
She could call on the phone. Well, I turned my volume down.
When she first logged in, we could hear her, so I'm not sure.
Birds. Okay, Audrey, well, that's not. See.
I can hear you.
Muted, so when, when I muted it and you muted yours, so she couldn't hear what you said.
Oh, okay. What did I say?
She has the option to call in.
Oh, that's right, okay, yeah, Audrey, you do have the option of calling in if you want to use that as your microphone. Obviously something's not working. A dog?
Okay, then maybe I'm on now now.
It was your dog.
Yes. But you haven't heard him before.
Hey, Audrey.
He's still there.
Can you talk some more? We just.
Yeah, you don't want to get me started. I could. How did we get so far afield? Well, you were back on the road. And now we're at Indian artifacts. How, without settling the easement, how did we get this far out?
It was brought up during the years.
Not only the road issue, there's other issues at hand.
But these are all pending on the approval of the partition.
Well, there's many issues to talk about. Do you want to talk about the easement?
Well, I think that's a major issue. But going back to that road, we had a oh, a housing development that the fire department said the road had to be 20 feet wide minimum, no matter what. And aren't they getting to that point? And that was the fire department. They even came to the meeting. It's been about five years ago. Jenny and I were talking about it.
There is a normal minimum fire code standard for fire apparatus access of 20 feet.
Yes.
Standard's been in place for.
And it was required. So how, without? I've heard all, I heard all the rest. Go ahead, go with your Indian.
Well, I guess one of the questions to easement is that's the big thing really that they still have to get rid of the easement. Can we approve something that can't be built on?
Well, the, I mean, that's a good question. Cause there's a couple of things the easement does. There's blocking access, but certainly it also impacts building footprint.
Jacob, I was looking at that. Your drawing with your shading and your hatch pattern where the easement was, it doesn't have their proposed fire apparatus turnaround, for instance.
That was, that was something that they.
So it's, I don't know if that's a required thing for us to review, but if they were to have that, half of that's in that easement. If that was pushed farther to the north, so it was out of the easement, is there enough room for, for a house by, by the standard?
Probably a distance thing because then. I've always seen that hammerhead turn around right by where the house is.
Yeah. Well, it'd have to be by where the house is because this is a glance or potentially get close to it.
Right.
So the floodplain is roughly here on our floodplain map. That's approximate. Now, a dwelling unit can be a McMansion or it can be a tiny home. So if the floodplain's here and we stay out of that, there's still some footprint to get a home in there.
With the fire apparatus turnaround?
And, you know, how, how that apparatus turnaround manifests, it could be a hammerhead, it could be something that goes around the building. The easement certainly doesn't help the situation. And it would just kind of eyeballing it. Takes up a lot of space.
And I drew, I drew yours onto their drawing with the hammerhead. It takes up that hammerhead easement. So if you were to take that same polygon, push it north, it would be, you know, at the floodplain on one end and you know, half the rest of the lot. But I don't know, just.
And, and floodplain law talks about minimizing impacts to structures and things like that. You know, driveways do have a potential to be in the floodplain.
So they were to get access from somewhere else, adjacent property, get around the easement, would it still be enough room for the hammerhead, sensitive lands, the floodplain?
Good question. Kind of a park around the tree.
I, I have one quick question on the, on the trees that I never thought about till now. Have any of those trees in that area that could be taken down? Have they, any of them in March had this big old roof?
Not that I'm aware of.
Has there been a tree? I don't recall in the older material whether there's been a tree studied by the applicant.
The, the applicant did do a tree study. And, and this map reflects that.
Doesn't have anything to do with thorninesses for this old growth?
No. It's, it's a size thing. Old growth is usually pretty big. And if, if you look at the diameters on here, you know, you do have some pretty good sizable trees.
Well, I guess what, I guess more my question, it doesn't have to be, you know, Lewis and Clark time. But there was, if I recall correctly, there was some testimony about all the eagles, all the eagles nesting. Would that be something that the city would need to consider to have investigated? A particular tree needs to be safeguarded?
If it, if it was 2006, yes. But in 2007 eagles were delisted from the Endangered Species Act. Cause when that was, that came up, I'm like, oh man, we better look at that. And, and our sensitive lands chapter does address endangered species habitats.
They, they still are protected under the Golden Eagle Protection Act.
Oh.
So their trees are still protected. Their nests are still protected, but that's federal laws, that's something we can afford, yeah.
And, and our, our sensitive lands chapter, does it reference the Eagle Act?
Well, because this is considered in sensitive lands, does that still require the city to require some kind of research study before November?
Let's see. So sensitive lands issued by the planning commission, fish and wildlife habitats as listed. A, B, state and federal threatened endangered species habitats as listed. And then the standards. Wildlife habitats based on the findings, all the criteria are met. Those land form alterations to develop is not within fishing wildlife habitats as listed. The extent in nature of the proposed land form alterations or development will not create site disturbances to a great, an extent greater than the minimum required for the use. As listed. As listed where? Good question. I don't have a, a clear answer for it, to be honest. If, if we knew it was endangered species habitat, it would be something clear. And I know in floodplain law, there's a lot of discussion about development and floodplains and impacts to endangered species. And, you know, probably in the next few years, we'll see amendments to our floodplain rules that requires us to take that into consideration because of lawsuits that started up in the Puget Sound area. But the code is not clear and I don't think our comprehensive plan lists them. In my experience working for counties, when, when, you know, all these jurisdictions were going through the goal five stuff, and so the state has the statewide goals and guidelines and goal five are natural and cultural resources, which includes habitats. If our comprehensive plan listed them, then we'd have that direct link. Without that, I don't know what lawful link we have.
What about the Dalton Lake sensitive area? Don't we have a special map for the Dalton Lake?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so what does that map say or what does that area say in regards to safeguarding potential endangered species or natural habitat?
So if we look at the, so we have our buffer. So Dalton Lake is protected from impacts and the protection buffer is protected from impact. And our code says a lot of things. Impacts to this, to these, the buffer requires a lot of findings that aren't always easy to meet. But basically, you know, the sanctity of that area is protected except under extreme circumstances. And that's why when I talked about the trees, when we look at the trees in the sensitive land area, those are the ones that are untouchable.
There's no known eagle's nest on this property. So it's really not, not a point.
I, I have, I have not observed an eagle's nest and I don't recall any testimony. There's a lot of testimony about eagles and other birds using the trees. There was a lot of that. But no, there's no nests that we're aware of.
We're still. Without easement, there's no partition.
But to argue at that point, from the other side, I don't think that planning commission, I think it's had private easement, that's something for a higher authority to decide. Am I incorrect in that assessment?
Well, the way, the way, I mean, if you look at the record, there's, there's two sides. You know, there's always two sides, right?
There's always two sides. Legally, she has got a title that gives her the right to that easement. And until that's settled, we're not doing roads or trees or anything.
Arguments in the record, one is based on the easement, do you uphold the condition as it's written now that says, well, you need to resolve this in order to move forward?
That's right.
Or as has been suggested by one side, you, you use that as a basis for denial.
That's the basis for denial.
His concern is the road.
They have to settle that.
We don't need to settle the road. That's up to us. And my concern is that the staff's recommendation cut out is not adequate enough. Even for public emergency response. Future development on that. And so I, I think that we either have to look at an alternative or another option. Either the. Go ahead, sorry. Oh, either going to what the minimum requirement is, the 20 feet or something between 20 feet and the turnout. Because I, I'm dissuaded that this should be considered a private access. I think that this needs to be continuation of belt and road. Question is whether it needs to be the 20 full feet or something less.
As far as potential lots down there, we've got the three that were sort of obvious there. We also have 140 belt road. Could be split just like we're working with now. You've got enough volume there in the land. And also there in 265 could be split. So there's maybe five new building sites there that would impact this road quite a bit, at least one, one third again. So for this partition, do we look at the road and see more improvements? So come up for the next time around with someone else. Well, we did, we're gonna have to approve more of the road also.
Sure. And that gets, that gets into the precedence thing that Commissioner Pugsley was talking about.
You can't make existing residences improve in front of their street.
Well, the, the option would be as staff indicated earlier, we could require a, a non demystorative agreement by the president applicant, that they would not oppose future public improvement district being formed in which they would share in the cost of approving their portion of the road as future development is extended beyond that.
When would you trigger that LID though?
Well, when those other future developments, isn't that correct?
Yeah, it would be sometime between now and thousand years.
But it would still be on the deed.
It would be on the deed, yep.
And that happens, that goes with the property.
It would be, you know, a title company will pick it up and like our famous easement here, you know. Won't, won't create any problem now.
Well, that's true. Yeah. But it, it also would.
Will alleviate a problem in the future with the dislances.
Exactly. That's exactly right. It just, you know, what, what really strikes me is that the property owner knew or should have known that this issue was facing them at the time they decided to present this proposal. It wasn't like something that just happened or was unavoidable or unexpected. And the fact that there was no request for variance would indicate to me that the applicant figured that they would just make their proposal as if there were a private driveway or, you know, whatever you want to call it. Without consideration that they were extending beyond public right of way. That's my biggest, that's my biggest concern. A really common roadway problem. We haven't seen ones. We have so many of these little roads that don't fit the criteria. Many, many, many. But it's, it's hard to beat these people into the ground to fix a very rampant problem we have all through St. Ellis because of cliffs.
I mean, I can't go back, redo what's happened over the history. We have to look at what's We have to look at what's on the table. The biggest problem I have is still going back to the easement. Talking a lot about trees and everything else, but.
The easement settlement.
Covered it. This is pretty much a buildable lot when they partition it off, but then you put in there, the easement has to go away.
So. So if we deny it based on the easement alone, a week, a month, ten years down the road, the sites agree or the courts, higher courts decide that the easement is thrown out. The applicant can come back, start all over again. And that, and we can legally hang a denial on the facts that the easement has not been used to, the easement has not been quashed legally. That can be the basis for our denial.
Well, anything can be the basis of your denial. You would, i- if that's going to be where you're going, we want to make sure that the reasons are clear. And it could be both access as well as a building envelope on parcel two.
Well, I think there's been enough testimony by the opponent easement to prevent, you know, access as as proposed by the applicant.
I mean, the easement's huge.
So I think that that already is on the record. Now, as far as the buildable portion, staff is going to have to remind us about that.
Oh, yeah, I I talked about that based on what Commissioner Carey brought up when he took the hammerhead concept as provided by the applicant and then imposed, superimposed it with the easement, which showed that, you know, that this takes a pretty good bite out of
Buildable lot.
The buildable lot. So i- if if you're talking about the easement, you know, you have the the basis for denial angle, and then you have the, you know, do you modify it? In the amended decision, we didn't talk about building envelope for parcel two. And so it's possible that you amend the decision that just says, well, it's an access and building envelope problem. And then we have a clear case for its removal and or reduction, and where those reductions should happen.
Sure seems like either if we deny it or we accept it with the condition, they're still in the same position. Nothing can happen until the easement goes away. So if they deny it, they just apply when the easement is gone. Or if they accept it, they hope that they get the easement before the, for the decision expires, right? It's not like it's, the decision we made today is going to be something final.
It's just a, it's a household question of having to go through the process again.
Your amended decision says there there's another possibility besides going through the easement of going around it.
Yeah, but but that doesn't acknowledge the building envelope question that you brought up.
That's right. But without the easement, there's more room.
There's a lot more room, yeah.
But yeah, if the easement stays, then how do you get a hammerhead in there? You're accessing it from any other property. It may take longer to get access, you're not then, because, like, yeah. So we're usually good way, but. And I think that you need to, that needs to go on record as in acknowledging that any decision made by the planning commission, right, can be appealed to rule. Is that correct?
That is correct, yeah. Any decision, that'll be part of the notice, is that the the appellate authority beyond this is the Oregon Land Use Court of Appeals, yep. And after that, it's the Court of Appeals. And I think it's the Supreme Court, or State Supreme Court after that, but I hope I don't have ever get that far.
If you take it back up, way back to what we're doing here, we're here because of appeal.
That's correct.
Not because of your decision.
Well.
Addressing the appeal, or are we addressing your decision because of the appeal?
So I made my initial decision, we received several comments from the papers. I amended that decision based on the comments that I felt had merit. And then that decision was appealed. So the relevance to the decision that I made is, one of, you could, you have the potential saying, wait, will we uphold staff's decision? And that's it.
Did you know about the easement when you made that decision?
Excuse me?
Did you know about the easement when you made your original decision?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Because in the original decision, it said, you need to get rid of the easement. The amended decision said, you need to get rid of it or find a way around it. But what I wasn't thinking of as much was that the building envelope. And I think the visual of this hammerhead, kind of like, yeah, that's a good point, Dan.
Is it required?
What would be required? Now, we have a letter from the fire marshal that talked about sprinkling and wanting some type of turnaround. With every professional, you have different opinions, and if they do this twenty years from now, you know, a fire marshal could have a different comment. Of course, technology, you know, fire apparatus may all be airborne at that point, using hovercrafts or something, you know, technology changes.
Well, that's very true, going back to Commissioner Carey's question by the applicant, the appellant, bringing the issue up, doesn't that open up the entire thing over again as if they were a brand new? I mean, we can go beyond.
It is de novo, that's correct, yes, it is de novo. So, you you know, these three things are the things that have been challenged. But conceivably, you could say, well, pigs will fly if we do this, thus we have to deny it. If if our code said, if this rules out and pigs flying, you have to deny, even though that wasn't brought up.
So let's say we we, you know, with your opinion, but we modify it and have it a different, another condition that has to be a little lot when they're done. The the building envelope has to meet some standard, you know. Maybe the fire turnaround is in the neighboring lot that they've gotten access to. Whatever we want to call it, we have to tell them where that goes, right? We just have to have one. And when the, in the end, they have to have a buildable lot, right?
Yes.
So they have to have, they have to meet fire standards, they have to get access through the easement or another, another means through the properties. And they have to have a lot.
So I I think in in that case, as as I'm brainstorming this, if that's the direction you went, we would need a plan, a conceptual plan showing access footprint that shows it can work. And, you know, if be able to negotiate loss of some of that easement and still have a plan that can show everything working, great.
So it's so many conditions with, based on stuff we don't know about. Seems like that's, it's it's to be better to deny it and then come in with a plan that shows all that stuff. I'm just saying.
It would be cleaner.
Be cleaner, yeah, it's 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 really messy, we need condition, condition, condition.
Because you're basically hanging, basically hanging on your, your hat on something, but you have no control.
Right. You have to make sure your conditions are really carefully written, or doesn't work.
So the easement's gone, they can't really change that hammerhead, it could be moved down to the lot line. A lot of different things could happen to make it more buildable beyond that.
But it all still comes down to the easement, right?
Exactly.
And they just build above the floodplain?
Yeah, a a lot of it's out of the floodplain. And so if if, and and if this entire parcel is in the floodplain, you probably hear more from me about it. As I mentioned, the floodplain is roughly here. At least on our flood maps. And I know there's testimony about the ninety-six flood reaching up to this tree. And, you know, that may have been greater than a hundred foot flood in that particular instance. But our, but our flood maps, and the last time they were updated was November of two thousand ten, is is roughly here. So from a floodplain standpoint, without that easement, there is options to avoid it.
So the hammerhead could be out in flood.
Yes. But not in the protection zone.
Well, we don't need to design this project.
Nope. And I still think, I mean, I think that very good points, whereas coming back to head by it easement, and that big question mark. I think the curtain for the horse seems like. So unless there's any more discussion or deliberation, I think I'm ready to make a motion on this table. My motion would be to deny the application based on lack of clear right away. How do you want to phrase that? Right away, but clear.
Are you talking about building envelope?
Both building and the road. Yeah, access.
Oh, 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 based on inadequate access?
Because of the easement. Question of the easement is basically the lynchpin whole thing. Until that's cleared up, I think that we have no choice but to deny.
Okay, so you're saying that the easement is in the way of access and building a footprint? Okay, I see where you're going.
And we have to go any further beyond that?
Well, that's up to you.
Because legally, we don't know if it can go away or not, still current. Places, the thesis, right?
Deny it on the basis of having that, let's see, having that easement extinguished.
Not having it extinguished, right.
I think where Graves going is the easement is in the way of access and building footprint, and that's what's giving him heartburn.
All right, so.
I mean, that was a fun motion.
Okay, so.
Second the motion.
Would you repeat the motion?
I think if you want to, you received that, so it's.
Well, the the motion that I heard was that it should be denied based on that easement to to it prohibiting access to parcel two as well as being a substantial impact to the building footprint of parcel two. That's what I believe what you said.
Basically, it's the impediment.
The impediment of the easement.
Yeah.
Okay.
Until that's cleared up.
All right, it's been motioned seconded, let's just go, I'll go around by name since we can't see what. Greg.
Yes, for the motion.
Yes, on denial. Dan.
Yes.
Sheila.
Yes.
Catherine is not here, absent. Jennifer. And Audrey.
Yes, on denial.
All right. It's unanimous for denial of this petition.
And we need a motion for findings.
Go vote.
That's the only thing for tonight?
How come you guys didn't have to wear masks?
Well, we can.
Oh, my gosh, nobody, nobody told me.